Oh, Canada! Our home is in print. To page the law, we know our sounds are bad. We know in hearts we see right, the truth or strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on the recording. God be our love, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on the recording. Oh, Canada, we stand on the recording.
Somebody did it. Well, welcome tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Before we start, is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or general interest thereof? And if none, if one should come up, please advise us then. Thank you. The approval of the council minutes, the meetings of the minutes of the special meeting held on February the 12th and the 26th. Looking for a motion. Councillor Dunn, Councillor Thiessen. Is there any questions on that? All in favor? Carry. And also the minutes of the council meeting held February the 12th and the 26th. Motion for that? Councillor Dunn? Councillor Jacobs? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Is there any business arising out of the minutes? Seeing none, then we will go right into the public meeting. And the public meeting is for the drainage report regarding the Goslin Drain, Luanne and Ms. Baird. I'm gonna say Ms. Baird, but it's not. You are a Baird though, aren't you? Part Baird? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, ladies.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, we're asking council to consider the report provided by Baird AE dated February 14, 2019, for the Goslin Drain culvert improvements pursuant to the provisions of section 78 of the Drainage Act. And that council authorize the project be tendered, and should the said tenders be within the engineer's estimate of 136,000, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to award the tender and to enter into any necessary agreements. And that by law 1419 authorizing the work be presented to council tonight for first and second reading. And that a court of revision be held on April 29, 2019. Council may recall back in April of 2018, administration held a site meeting where it was discussed that the culvert at parcel 6102701 is in need of replacement. And upon reviewing the drain by the municipality, it was acknowledged that the current report is not sufficient for future maintenance provisions or assessment schedule to accurately and fairly assess the cost of replacing the culvert. As a result, the engineer was appointed to investigate this culvert along with all the culverts on the drain and provide a new schedule for future maintenance works. There are currently 19 culverts within the Goslin Drain. It is recommended that both construction and maintenance work is needed to repair all these culverts. Baird AE did complete their review, and Halliday Pearson from Baird AE is here tonight
Based on our inspection of the 19 culverts, we found that two had failed. We have recommended a complete reconstruction of those culverts with cost sharing between the owner, the upstream lands for the six-meter typical culvert length. The remainder of the cost would be assessed to the County of Essex because in the 1980s, the strain was moved off the road at the county's request and cost. So due to the proximity of the two homes adjacent to these culverts, very long enclosures were needed, 55 meters and approximately 35 meters. So the county paid for the enclosure costs at that time, and I've recommended that the county be assessed those costs again. Other maintenance can be done by the drainage superintendent and following the bylaws that address those culverts. I'd answer any questions?
Great. Is there any questions for Councillor Dunn?
To you, Deputy Mayor. My question is, you mentioned the county. What's the percentage of the cost going back to the county?
If you turn to page, let's see, 12 of the report, county costs are...
An addendum. There's an attachment to it.
Are included there. So for culvert seven that's being replaced, 60% of the cost will be assessed to the county. And for culvert nine, 50% of the cost to the county.
Okay. Councillor Jacobs?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question is along with Councillor Dunn's, the fact, are they willing to pay that? Or is that in dispute? Or is it going to be automatically provided?
The county is here. If you'd like to let them speak as well.
We'll bring that up. Be up to the Deputy Mayor. No, we'll bring that up. Any other questions? Okay, so everybody knows that this is a public meeting, so is there anybody here to talk on this specific drain? Come on up. Could you give us your name and address? And, oh, I always like seeing this. You've got five minutes. But just hang on a second. The mic, I don't think, is on, on the side. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Mark Fishley. I am with the County of Essex. The county has reviewed the reports. Any questions that I did have, Luanne previously addressed those, so at this time, there are no other questions or concerns on behalf of the county.
Great, thank you. Is there any other questions to the county, or Councillor Jacobs?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. But that really doesn't answer my question, other than you have issues. Is that saying that you are agreeing to pay the portion that would be assessed to the county?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you very much, Mark.
Any further questions? There's a motion on the floor of the recommendation that... Okay, Councillor... Sorry.
We just want to clarify one thing. Since the time this report started, there has been a couple updates to the assessment rule, and we found two parcels that are no longer included in it. You might recall about six months ago, you adopted a new report on the Goslin Drain Extension, which was at the top end of the strain. That report was then approved by council, so it excluded two parcels on Mercy Road Eight. So they will be removed. We'd like to suggest to council that Halliday correct the assessment schedule, so it'll be mailed out for the Court of Revision, and it'll be presented at the Court of Revision with the amended changes.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay. So any other questions? It's moved by Councillor Jacobs, supported by Councillor Thiessen. On the question, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Carry. Thank you. The next report is PLA's 0719 regarding Site Plan Approval Designation. Madeline, hope this isn't your last report either.
Good evening, council. Unfortunately, this is my last report. So in December 2016, council adopted a policy to delegate powers and duties of site plan control. So this delegated both administrative and legislative powers for the items relating to site plan approvals to the manager of planning and the planner. The delegation was conditional upon notifying council following the exercise of a delegation through a biannual report, and this is that report. In 2018, planning services received 47 complete site plan applications, of which 17 were site plan agreements for new development, 25 were amendments to existing agreements, and five were deemed as exemptions under site plan control by law. This represents an increase in applications by approximately 34% when compared to those received in 2017. To date, 29 of the 47 applications received in 2018 have been approved. This is in addition to eight applications submitted in 2017, which were approved in 2018. There were many different factors that contribute to the time it takes to review and approve site plan applications. This includes quality of submission, the need for external agency approvals such as MNRF, the county, MTO, and also IRCA, the need for additional studies to ensure site suitability and land use compatibility, for example, stormwater management or a noise impact study, and additional planning act applications, which might be a zoning bylaw amendment, minor variance, or consent. On average, site plan applications were reviewed and approved by Development Support Committee within four months. This is two months less than the provincial average, which, according to a 2018 study conducted for the Ontario Association of Architects, indicated the average site plan application review time took six months or more. Among the approved 2018 site plans were 106 hectares of new or expanded greenhouse development, over 20,000 square feet of commercial retail space, and over 22,000 square feet of commercial industrial space. These developments include the recently constructed Starbucks on Erie Street South, the three-unit Office Plaza on Talbot Street East for Ives Insurance, as well as the new Corporate Canada offices on Seneca Road. Since receiving delegated approval of site plan control, planning services has been diligently working on improving the overall organization and efficiency of the site plan process and improved customer service. In 2018, planning services made the following improvements to the existing site plan process. We establish a pre-consultation review process that provides prospective applicants clear information regarding the entire site plan process and opportunity to discuss their proposals with Development Support Committee and obtain preliminary comments on the layout, design, and necessary approvals. We created a new site plan application that is user-friendly and concise. The application will be available in both electronic and paper format. We developed an updated site plan website, which includes online pre-consultation meeting request portal, frequently asked questions, an easy-to-follow chart depicting the steps involved in the site plan approval process, information and guidelines on submission requirements for site plan approvals, and how-tos for standard steps and items such as security release requests and letter of credit templates. Developing a consistent approach to site plan processing and approvals has allowed planning services to undertake proactive measures as well. At this time, planning services is working with property owners to ensure that the site plan work is completed within the required one-year deadline. This action helps to return securities to developers when the work is completed in a timely manner and enables planning services to follow up on contraventions of site plan agreements. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Jacobs?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Madeline, well, I'm glad to see this is happening, but I just have a couple of questions. And I'm not saying it's planning department by any means, but you know, we get these complaints and calls, I'm sure other councillors do as well, that we submitted a site plan, and all of a sudden, they're looking for something different now. Or they're after the approval has been given. What is the process? And I know it's not planning. There's always two sides to the stories, but that's the call that I personally have been getting from some of the contractors. What is the process at that stage of the game? I know that, you know, the best site plans are laid out with the best intentions, but sometimes modifications have to be made for what, for unforeseen reasons? How do they go about that so that we don't have this big controversy going on? Like, does that consultation go back to the designer? How do you handle that?
So there's a couple of different ways. It really depends on where they're at. So if there's a change in the site plan while they're still in the review process, they're more than welcome to make that change. Then they resubmit their drawings, and we review whatever changes. It kind of fits right in with where the review is anyways. But if the agreement's already been signed, then they'd have to come back for either an amendment to the existing agreement for that change, or we could do it through a site plan exemption, which is really for very, very minor changes that don't require any approvals from any external agencies, likely don't require any changes to stormwater management, so they're very minor. That can be through an inside plan exemption, which doesn't include a form or a fee. It's very quick. It's an administrative process. The amendment, though, is the same sort of pre-consultation and review process, application and fee, similar to if they started the project new.
Okay. And some of, if I may, Deputy Mayor, in some of the, excuse me, some of the other instances that do happen is the fact that say, well, the site plan has been approved, and then all of a sudden, they say, well, the municipality comes back and wants this changed now, but after the initial site plan has been approved. Is there a lot of that? Is there any credibility to that story, I guess, that gets fed back?
I'm not aware of any instances where the municipality has asked someone to change the site plan after approval unless, of course, it was through a municipal initiative, a project, something like that, which would have its own process outside of site plan control. But I'm not aware of any changes that we would ask for after the final approval.
I appreciate your comments, and we're gonna miss you, and good luck in your new position.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thiessen?
The, Madeline, the website, is it the update that you had on it? Is that website already up and running, that application process? So they've already have all these items that you that you had spoke about? The applicants already have access to all of that? Is that right, to streamline the process?
Yeah, so the website is up and running. We have our frequently asked questions. We have the pre-consultation portal. The new site plan application is waiting final approval before it gets posted on the website because we need to make sure that we have the proper legal authorization page. But otherwise, yes, everything is there. So, and it will be up hopefully before I leave.
So in your experience, now that you're leaving, you can probably be a little more honest with us. What, in your experience, what has been the biggest holdup on some of the site plans? Is it regulatory? Is it outside agencies? Is it outside engineers? Is it within our own? Can you identify some of those areas?
I don't think that there's anything necessarily in particular that's a regular holdup. We just want to be sure that everything is done to the best standard. It includes external agencies, that's sort of out of our jurisdiction, so we don't have control over those timelines. Sometimes that's a factor, especially if you're dealing with more than one. So in projects where you're dealing with both IRCA, you could be dealing with the county and MTO, those are their own timelines, and so we have to work within those as well. But we try to do our internal review as far as the municipality goes as quickly as we can.
Councillor Dunn?
To you, Deputy Mayor. My question is regarding, when you say these pre-consultation, and I, do you sit down with all parties, like the owner as well as the, all the other people they've hired as well, to make sure that they're all on the same page?
So in most instances, I will have a one-on-one meeting with their agent and hopefully the property owner. So wherever possible, we have the property owner there unless they're away. There's a couple that aren't often around, so that makes it difficult. And then we are in frequent communications with the people that are working on their projects. So I know that our engineering department works very closely with any engineers that are on a project. And then we're in constant communication with the agent of the application, who is really the person that you should be communicating with anyways to make sure that everything is concisely, all the information is given together in a single package and that kind of thing, and it makes things more efficient that way.
I just wanted to say, I really am excited about the new provisions you're trying to start so that you can make it even more streamlined, and the fact that the process is so much faster than other places. And lastly, I just want to congratulate you on your move, and we're sorry to see you go, and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Touche. Thank you. And thank you. If there's no further questions, there is a recommendation with Councillor Dunn, supported by Councillor Jacobs. Any other questions on that? All in favor? Opposed, if any? Carry. Thank you. 7.2 subdivision, assumption of two Malibu, and this doesn't look like, what's his name? Allen? So, come on up, Allen. Rob's gonna do it, sorry.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Actually, I thought, given that John is going to be presenting these two reports to council tonight, excuse me, I thought it would take a couple minutes and take the opportunity to briefly walk council through the process of how the municipality comes to own infrastructure that's built during these private developments like a subdivision. If we think about a pre-development, there's a privately owned, large vacant parcel of land. Post-development, there's multiple parcels of land with public right-of-way, municipally-owned land, and municipally-owned infrastructure. And so John's gonna be presenting two reports tonight, and they each touch on one of what I've broken down to and summarized as the, as the four main parts of this process. So I made this very simple flowchart for council tonight. Angela, if you just want to quickly jump over to that other diagram, this is the actual flowchart that we use, but I'm not going to bore council with that because a lot of that is administrative detail, and it's a process that we go through to make sure that by the time the municipality takes control and ownership of this infrastructure, that it's appropriate, that it's designed, it's built as designed, and those sorts of things. So if we can just jump back to the, to the other one. Yep. Sorry, Angela. So prior to development, the developer brings forward a plan, and within the municipal guidelines that are available, the developer designs the municipal infrastructure, so water mains, roads, sewers, streetlights, sidewalks, those sorts of things. We agree, we review their design, agree on their design, and then they complete the work. When we're notified that the work's complete, we'll go out there, we'll identify any deficiencies that may exist, ensure that all the documentation they're required to give us on this infrastructure, these roads, these sewers, these water mains have been submitted. And the very first thing that we do as a municipality is we accept this infrastructure. And so one of the reports is about accepting it. And essentially, that means that it is built as designed, and they've submitted all the required documentation. That triggers a one-year minimum maintenance period. Through that maintenance period, the developer's responsible for maintaining that infrastructure. And the one year allows an entire season, a freeze-thaw cycle, to make sure that the infrastructure that's built is functioning. At the end of that one-year maintenance period, if there's any deficiencies, we require those to be corrected. Again, any documentation submitted. And if we're happy with that, then the final step in that process is that after that one-year maintenance period, council, the municipality assumes all of that infrastructure, and then the municipality now owns all of that infrastructure and is required to maintain and replace that infrastructure in perpetuity. And so that's, that's an abbreviated summary of the, of the process. And so again, John's reports each touch on one of the different parts of the process.
Before you go, Rob, this is, so Councillor Jacobs, you have a question too, Rob?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Rob, under the one-year warranty plan, or during that time you identify any deficiencies or whatever, what about beyond that? Like, is there any type of a warranty that's given to us as far as the infrastructure goes that's being turned over to us? Like, I guess where I'm going with that, if, say, a pipe at the time looks like it's standard to meet standards, but it's a deficient product that we find out two years later that is, you know, not performing as it's supposed to, is there any feedback for us in that particular area or not? It's you bought it, you got it type thing?
To you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor, typically, it's ours. We wouldn't go back on the developer. You know, perhaps we would have some recourse on the manufacturer of that particular material. I'm sure there's infrastructure that gets turned over to us that has equipment, that has standard manufacturer warranties, I think of pumps as an example. But nothing beyond that. I mean, when, when we assume it, it's ours, and essentially, it would be ours to repair and correct any of those deficiencies. And that's why it's so important that we exercise due diligence during the design phase, why we need to be diligent throughout the inspection phases, ensure that the consultants' engineers signing off on all of this work, that it's being constructed appropriately, and that we ensure that by the time we assume it, we're confident that it was installed correctly and per the design.
If I may, Deputy Mayor. Just to follow up to that, Rob, so I guess Mr. Pilmer, that would be in his department, so you would say, well, you're going to put in this type of pump with this type of capacity, not just a pump that's, maybe from a third rural country or something that's been manufactured that could be installed. So we have an input into what type of product is going in there then, to ensure that it meets standards and has longevity?
Yes, to you, Deputy Mayor. That's correct. We sign off on all of the design, all of the reports that are done and the materials that are used.
Thank you. John, if you want to give your report on this one, please?
The first report is for the assumption of services for two Malibu and Santos Development Phase One. The works were completed, and we have received all the documentation. So the recommendation is to assume and to release the securities for this subdivision.
Wow, that was quick. Thank you for that, and thank you, Rob, for your little explanation there, too. That would have been nice to have that, too, but not the big one, because now, if you gotta follow that process, I see why it does take so long. So is there any questions on, on what John just presented? Moved by Councillor Jacobs, supported by Councillor Thiessen. There's no more questions. Call a question, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Thank you.
Thank you. The second report is for the acceptance of subdivision services in the Santos Development Phase Two. All of the works accepting the surface course of asphalt and sidewalks have been installed, and deficiencies have been corrected, and all the documentation have been submitted. The other item on this is there's two items in the subdivision agreement that need to be amended. The subdivision originally was going to be two phases, and then it went to three phases, and there was a couple of sections that didn't get changed to the third phase. The first item is the removal of the lands from the Bevel Line Drain for the subdivision. And the second item is to install some fencing along the very north limit of Phase Three. Since Phase Three has not been completed, we need to take and amend the wording of the agreement so the works can be accepted in Phase Two.
Great, thanks, John. Any questions on this report? Seeing none, I need a motion then to accept. The Councillor Dunn. Councillor Thiessen? Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Carry. Thank you. Okay, 7.4 report for, regarding the appointment of alternate members to property standards. And I think Brenda's gonna take this one.
Yes. Leamington Council enacted a property standards bylaw which provides for property standards committee to consider appeals received from orders issued by the property standards officers. Council, at its meeting held December 17th, appointed Councillors Hammond, Wilkinson, and Thiessen to the property standards committee. In order to ensure that three members sit at the property standards hearings, administration is recommending the appointment of an alternate member who will attend these meetings when a member is absent. The appointment of the alternate member would be for the term of council. There's no financial impact to the report as members are not compensated. So the recommendations before council are Councillor Dunn be appointed as an alternate member to the property standards committee for the 2018-2022 council term, and administration bring forward an amendment to bylaw 62205, providing for the appointment of an alternate to the property standards appeal committee.
Thank you, Brenda. Any questions? Motion then? Motion, Councillor Thiessen? I need a second here to move it forward. Get it on the floor. It's gonna die. Thank you, Councillor Dunn. Second it. Is there any discussion or questions on this? Okay, I'm gonna, sorry, Councillor Thiessen?
The reason behind this is that in one of our last meetings, Deputy Mayor and myself were at, there were two of us at the appeals committee hearing, and we could have potentially been in a tie. And we need the third person there, and that they were looking for an alternate so that there will be three people at all times at these. It's not that they're gonna be sitting there, we're gonna have four. I really think that, I don't think there's any harm in having an alternate member sitting on these. I think it's just good practice that we have that option to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Thiessen. Any other questions? Seeing none, you have the recommendation in front of you. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Duly noted, thank you, and congratulations, Councillor Dunn, on this position, and I'm glad you took the training last week. Okay, so the next, we're gonna move on to the next one. It's also Brenda.
This is an appointment of an alternate member to the appeal committee. In 2016, council established an appeal committee to hear appeals under the taxi and licensing bylaw. The committee is composed of three members of council as appointed by council each term. The committee held 10 hearings last year to consider appeals under both the taxi bylaw and business licensing bylaw. On December 17th, 2018, council appointed Councillor Jacobs, Thiessen, and Deputy Mayor Verbeke as council appointees on the committee. In order to ensure that three members sit at appeal hearings, administration is recommending the appointment of an alternate member who will attend these appeal meetings when a member is absent. The appointment of the alternate member would...
The appointment of the alternate member would be for the term of council. There's no financial impact to the report as members are not compensated. The recommendation is Counselor Hammond be appointed as an alternate member to the Appeal Committee for the 2018-22 council term. Administration bring forward an amendment to bylaw 6416, providing for the appointment of an alternate to the Appeal Committee.
Thank you, Brenda. It's similar to the last one, so is there any questions on this one? Seeing none, motion then, Counselor Dunn, second. Counselor Teason? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? It's Carrie, thank you. Report 7.6, in regards to the treasurer's statement for the council appointment and remuneration and expense. Laura?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Verbiki. This report satisfies the Municipal Act, Section 284, that the treasurer makes an annual disclosure of remuneration expenses paid to each council member as a member of office of council or any other body, and to each person other than a member of council. So this is our annual disclosure for council's consideration. And Schedule A provides a summary of the remuneration and expenses paid to each of the council members and committee members in 2018, including all board and agencies, all their expenses and the authorizations. So the request or recommendation before council this evening is that the treasurer's statement for 2018 council and appointee remuneration and expenses be received for information.
Thank you. Any questions to Laura? If not, I'm looking for a motion to receive. Counselor Jacobs, Counselor Teason, any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Thank you. Were no matters for approval? Other matters for consideration? 9.1 is the mayor's request for nominee, sorry. Okay. Mayor's request for nomination, Director of Small Urban Caucus for AMO. Peter?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. On, on March the 5th, Mayor McDonald was notified that she had been successful in her being nominated for the AMO Board of Directors. She will be, as you mentioned, filling a vacancy within the Small Urban Caucus. This is, this is an important step that keeps Leamington involved at the higher, higher levels of this organization, and I'm, I'm very pleased that, that Mayor McDonald is being appointed. The letter notes, though, that in order to complete the appointment, that a resolution is required to be passed by this council, and you can see the resolution at 9.1, but I will read it out so that, that everybody knows what it says. Resolution for consideration that council support Mayor Hilda McDonald's nomination for Director to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO Board of Directors, Small Urban Caucus for the 2019-2022 term, that the cost of Hilda McDonald's participation on the AMO Board, if elected, be paid by the municipality of Leamington and recorded separately from the mayor's regular council expenses, and that the required nomination form be submitted no later than April 5th, 2019. So although it sounds like once you pass a resolution that she's just on the list, this is the final step, this resolution will confirm then that she will be added to the AMO Board. And I open to any questions if there are.
Counselor Jacobs?
Not a question, Deputy Mayor. I would move the recommendation as well. I think as CAO has mentioned, I think it's important that Leamington is recommended at that level, and I believe the previous mayor also was on that, so it's good to have that continuation of support at that level.
Could I have a second here for further discussion? Counselor Dunn? Any further discussion? I guess my question is, Peter, not saying it's not worthy, but the cost, you think it's, you have any idea? I don't want to put you on a limb, but I, as opposed to, I know, you know, Mayor Patterson was only on there a short time, so really, you can't justify that, but I mean, cost-wise. But I mean, it's, are we looking at a lot? Minimal?
No. They have, they have several meetings. I was trying to find very quickly the number of meetings that they have. If I remember correctly, they have approximately six meetings a year, but the, some are, you're able to do by telephone conference calls. There is some involvement in working to prepare for the AMO Conference and the OSUM Conferences, so there is some additional workload there as well. But in, in my mind, the balance between the costs and the, and, yes, and the benefit, I think the benefits outweigh the costs significantly. Mind you, it is, it is not a minor commitment, but again, I think that Mayor McDonald is well-placed to be able to deal with that commitment.
Perfect, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, further discussion, Counselor Dunn?
To you, Deputy Mayor. Peter, when you said that about six meetings, but you also mentioned the OSUM, so it's, does, do the members of the Roma go to the OSUM, or I mean, to the AMO go to the OSUM and the Roma as well? Is that part of it? Like, do they, the other conferences?
My understanding is that the OSUM Conference and the AMO Conferences are the two conferences that are required, that require their Board of Directors to be a part of. I don't know about the Roma Conference.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you very much. There's no report in closed session? Thanks, Bill. And then I guess we're looking for consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 14-19 being a bylaw to provide for the culvert improvements over the Gosling Drain in the municipality of Leamington in the County of Essex. This is for first and second reading only. Bylaw 17-19 a bylaw to amend 6416 being a bylaw to recreate an Appeal Committee. Bylaw 18-19 being a bylaw to amend bylaw 62205 being a bylaw prescribing property standards. Bylaw 19-19 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council, the municipality of Leamington, its meeting held March 12th, 2019.
Any questions to that? Moved by Counselor Dunn, seconded by Counselor Teason. All those in favor? Carrie. There was no notice of motion, so we're into open session. Well, I got a few, so I like, I don't know why you get so many when you're in this. So I just, I just have a few to report on, and on February 27th, the Lieutenant Governor was here, we had a roundtable meeting over there, and I'd like to thank Peter for organizing that with his staff and pulling it off. It was great, great people there. It almost looked like they were handpicked, but everybody had a very delicate passion for the municipality. And then we, the counselors that were able to go, had a meet and greet with her for lunch, and that was also very good, too. The next day, February 28th, and March 1st, Mayor McDonald and myself, we headed off to Ottawa. We, with a gentleman who was working with Dave Van Kesten, George, but apparently now since Dave's not running, he's free to mingle with the opposition, and he did, we did hook up with seven key people there, with two MPs who are sitting in the government. We met with two official oppositions, and one that was close to mine was agriculture. And then we met with some deputies. It was well-received what our, our needs were. Their, their big concern was, too, if you're, if you're going to do this, why don't you do that? And so if you, if you're digging a hole, putting a trench in, you also put fiber in also, but I guess we'll have to wait and see what happens with the upcoming budgets. On March the 2nd, then, the mayor and I attended the South Western Ontario Tourism Conference in London, and it was well-received, and I guess the big topic now around is cannabis tourism. We took a tour of a couple other people that have worked out, and, and they're all working together, which is nice. So looking forward to bringing that. And Carrie was there also, and she has a lot of information. And today, I was fortunate enough, on behalf of the mayor and behalf of the town, to go do a public service announcement at St. Clair for the, St. Clair Centre Media in Windsor, and it's to congratulate Windsor and Leamington Hospice for its 40 years of service. So kudos to them, and that's all I have. Anything from, anything from admin? If not, is there statements of members non-debatable? Motion to adjourn. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll make that motion, and a job well done this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome back for a while. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody, and good night. I guess I got Counselor Dunn seconded. Okay, good thing I got my person on my right and my left here. Motion, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there, all in favor? Carrie. Thank you, Brenda. Good night.